Good evening. I'd like to call tonight's special meeting to order and we'll take attendance. I'm here. Alan is not here. John?
Yeah.
Greg is not here. Michelle?
Here.
Jim is not here. Stephanie? Jen? Lisa? Michael's not here. Julie? Thank you. And Pete is not here. So, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven, so we barely have a quorum, so we can move forward. All right. First item on the agenda is the discussion of the budget. Michelle?
Yeah.
The floor's yours.
All right. As we all know, the budget vote failed, not by a lot, but it did fail. So, we have to come back and decide what we're going to do about that. Historically, we look for more reductions in the budget. It doesn't mean we have to, but that is normally what we have felt that the voters were trying to tell us, that they felt it was too high. So, having said that, a couple of things before we go into the discussion, I just want to remind everyone that the initial budget development for this budget was $23,028,679, which was an increase of 7.67 percent. And the superintendent and administrators were able to cut $791,000 before it even came to us. Those were cuts that they felt were needed, or some of those were probably wants, but things that they felt would improve education in our district. But because we got hit with the over $500,000 increase in health insurance, we felt that that probably was not going to be amenable to our voters. So, we went ahead and looked for some additional cuts, and that's what we did in our previous meeting to send to the voters, and that's how we got it down to the 2.76. But I just wanted to remind everyone that getting down to the 2.76 meant that we cut about $1 million out of the original request. We've cut buses, we've cut staff, we've cut supplies. So, I want to keep that in mind before we move forward and continue to look for reductions. Having said that, I spoke with Pat, who has worked with her, with the administrators, to look at additional places that maybe look for some cuts, and they had some recommendations. If you want to talk about those, I think that's a good place for us to go before we start guessing at what might have the least impact on the students.
Okay. We got it. There we go. Yes. Again, this was in consultation with the administrative team, and Bob, and really looking more closely at the budget. So, the first reduction for consideration, which is really already an easy one, is there is another $15,583 in the reduction of the superintendent's salary. So, from this year to next year. So, it's not really a reduction, it's just a little different. So, that's really a no-brainer, because that's there. Okay. The next one, again, and you've heard some of these already, but I think you have to think about it when you have a budget that has gone down. Consideration of the public relations, that is $24,000. And as of now, that is not a position that is filled. I know it's something that the board is very in favor of and wants to have, but at this point, it is a possible reduction. We have, oh, let me just say one other thing. When I spoke with the administrators, Bob and I had really gone through the list and made it, and then they helped us prioritize the list. So, I'm telling you, the list prioritize from our team's point of view. And we worked basically with the mindset that either put things at the top of the list that are not impacting students, or that we don't have yet. Okay? So, it's not really a loss, because you don't have it yet. So, the next thing was the Z-Space, which was the tech program, which was $21,995. The piece after that was facilities and maintenance, which with the, it was $25,000, and we added $1,913 for FICA Medicare. Now, even though we have that as a staff person, I have spoken to Don O'Leary, and he can either make that part of a staff person, or supplies, or some work, which really can, might be done if we move something over. So, I think that might be something to consider. I put on there the program changes, and those were from page nine. It really is what is left from page nine. Okay? Which is the bottom, which is always the new initiatives. The total of that is $17,494, and it includes a reading speaker here for $3,000, a soccer goals, $5,469, weight room improvements, $8,065, and baseball training aid, $960. And again, I put it there because we don't have it yet. Nothing here is, we don't want it, but we don't have it yet, so it doesn't hurt as much if you don't have it. The next piece is we moved down the art teacher, .6, and that would be $38,555. We have two educational assistants that I am recommending a reduction. I'm sorry. The art, or the, okay. The art is $38,555. Excuse me. Educational assistance, and I have, which I'm happy to share with you, this is the summary of support staff. This does not include special education, but if you look at the last column on the bottom.
Take one and pass it down.
You will see that I put tutors and educational assistants together as far as support staff in the schools. And so, in Burnham right now, we have a ratio of 1 to 11. In booth free, we have a ratio of 1 to 25. And in WPS, we have a ratio of 1 to 16. So, my recommendation was to reduce an educational assistant at Burnham School, which would make the ratio 1 to 15, and to reduce one at WPS, which would make the ratio 1 to 19. And that is a savings with FICA Medicare, $45,097. The next one is the library clerk at Burnham School, which we've discussed, and that is And that would be a shared position with booth free if that was reduced. And then the last one on the list, because, you know, there's been a lot of chatter, is a half of an administrator, which is $74,875. And I do just want to talk about that for a second, because I do want to just give you my suggestions and recommendations about that, and advice from where I sit, because I do have a different view than most people. I know people believe that we are top-heavy in administration. There are a lot of things that go on behind the scenes legally, statutorily, that parents and board members and community members have really no idea. And we have a very competent, professional group of administrators who work very hard. We have a new superintendent coming in, who I think is going to do a fabulous job, but I do believe there will be a little bit of a learning curve. And we are bringing in a new program. So, it is not my recommendation to cut an administrator this year. It really is not. I wanted to put it there, because I wanted to be cognizant of the community and some of the feedback that we're getting, but it is not my advice to do that at this time. But you can see there that that is the cost, $74,875. So, those are the cuts that we've looked at, the reductions we've looked at at this point. It probably would be best to maybe go through them. You can lead and discuss, decide what you want to keep, what you don't.
Yep.
That would be my advice.
So, I think it would probably be best for us to go through. Actually, do you have copies of it? That would probably be helpful.
I do. I do. I just, we just, yeah, okay, that's fine. There you go.
I mean, now that we've talked about it all.
Yeah. And there's, there may be some for the administration if they want. We're not hiding them.
I had an extra. I think it would be helpful to go through each of these and sort of discuss how we feel about them, kind of get a sense whether we take a vote or not on each line item, and then we can kind of go back and forth and see how that affects. But before we launch into that, does anyone have questions either about what was proposed, or was somebody looking for something else that was not on this list? Had somebody, had any other thoughts? John?
I'm seeing on the support staff for Washington primary, is that a cut from four tutors to three? Is that in the cards?
Yes, that's on the sheet. And the reason it has four to three is because, I should have updated this, I apologize. When I made this on May 11th, I offered the principals the opportunity to either cut a tutor or an education assistant. Emily has decided to cut an education assistant. So, that really should be, keep it four and make the ed assistant one. My apologies.
And I just have another couple of recommendations, depending on how the rest of the board feels concerning the superintendent's cuts. So, maybe I'll reserve my additional recommendations until after we deliberate on if this is enough.
Okay. All right. So, well, that was the first item, the superintendent salary. So, did you have a question about that, John?
The superintendent's salary?
Oh, super, okay. Oh, sorry. Gotcha. The recommendation.
I just want to know if I'll have an opportunity later to make.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. So, the first, the first suggestion on the list, I don't think there's a lot of discussion that's contractual, so unless anyone has questions about that line. All right. The next one is public relations outside service, $24,000. Anyone have comments or questions? How do we feel about that one? Lisa?
I know we've had, we've had one, but we haven't really seen what he's done. So, do we have more information about, I guess, what he's, what we're cutting if we get rid of him, or that position?
Do you want to talk about that? Anthony, or do you want me to? Me?
No, no.
Pat.
He was here on a six-month basis, and his contract, I believe, ended January 31st, so we haven't paid him since. He had some great skills, but they weren't exactly what we were looking for, so we haven't had anyone, except Karen Files, who does it as part of her responsibilities since February 1st. I am of the belief at this point, this is just, again, my advice, right now, we don't have anyone, so to cut it, it's not missing. That doesn't mean that during the year, if you find someone, that you can't put it in the budget, you know, like we did this year. So, that's just how I feel about it. That's why I have it on the list.
Julie?
I think we discussed this briefly in the first go-around, and I think most people on the board felt that in light of AgSTEM, that whether it's Doug Clement or someone else, that it would be important to have some money in there to promote the new program. So, I think we really all agreed to that, and I would be opposed to taking that money out at this point.
You're right. That was on the last round, and I supported keeping it. I think the reason I'm supporting, or I would support cutting it at this point is our budget went down, and so we're kind of having to look at it with new eyes. And I'm hopeful that with the in-house, with Karen and the people who've been doing our publications so far, and the new director, hopefully, we will be able to produce most of what we need. And if we need to add in a little bit of money for some printing or some special materials, or we need to contract out for a specific item, a brochure, for example, that we feel we can't quite do, and we want to contract out for that one item, hopefully, it'll be a year where we can find some savings somewhere else in our budget, which we often do. We can, you know, look into the board budget, or if it happens to be a year where we haven't had the legal expenses that we do sometimes. So, I feel like, and those decisions, I think, will be coming, well, they'd probably be in the fall, because we need to be looking for students that are applying in the winter. So, it'd be, it would be upon us soon, but we would, we would have several months of the budget under our belts. We would have hired staff. We often have to carry an average for staff changes, because we won't know who's hired until we hire them, and where they fall on the seniority list. So, there, there might be a place there to look. Because I do agree, I think it's really important that we're able to do the public relations work that we need to. So, I'm just hopeful we'll be able to find other ways to do it. Yeah.
Well, I guess I think that the budget went down. Obviously, it went down, but I think that it would be quite easy for us to make that change the next time around, and I think there was a lot of confusion, maybe not amongst Roxbury and Washington, but at least the board members in Bridgewater, as to what we could do as a board member and what we couldn't do. There was questions about what PTOs could do and couldn't do, and my understanding is we can advocate personally, and I don't know how many of us really worked very hard at that, and it was such a close vote. My personal opinion is if we try a little bit harder, we can certainly make it pass next time without a huge reduction in the numbers. So, I don't want to cut things that we think is important, because we don't think the budget can pass. I think if we work a little harder, we can make the budget pass.
Great.
Yeah. Regarding the marketing, I agree, Julie, but, you know, regarding the marketing position, we put that in the budget, not to just have somebody who's there who can write a press release for us when we need something like that. And I think that was part of, I'll say, the false start with Doug. You know, we, we got him out there, did some things. I'm not sure we really knew what we wanted him to do, so, you know, can't blame him for that, for a lack of direction. But the money that was in the budget was really there earmarked as an investment for the AgSTEM program, making sure that we start this program out strong. And if we don't, what we, what to look at, you know, so we saved $24,000. I don't think it's the issue that caused the budget to go down. I agree with you. But if we come out of, if we fall short of our economic expectations, and I know we don't, this is what we're talking about, is money. We had a certain expectation of having so many enrolled children this time next year when we opened this program. We fall short, that's going to be four years we're going to have to endure that shortfall. All to save, you know, and looking at this saying, but if we, to save $24,000 in an effort to avoid that, this is not a place that I would recommend that we, that we get, I'll say, shortsighted on. It's really an investment. I mean, so when I look at this budget, that particular line item, that's what I have in mind. And we got to find the right person, we got to find the right way to spend it, but it's about making sure that we get the word out, and whatever we can to just have more, to have the great problem everyone would like to have, which is more applications than we know what to do with.
That's a good point. Well, why don't we move on, and we'll, let's, let's find the ones we have consensus on, and then we'll come back and see if we feel that that's enough. So, the next one was the Z-Space technology, which I personally do not want to cut. I feel like that's, we don't have anything new in this budget. That's the one, the one, you know, shiny piece that, that is exciting. It's moving us towards the STEM that we're really talking about. That's, and that would directly, that's something that every student would directly get to participate with. So, that, I don't support that one. Does anyone support cutting that one? John does? Oh, you have a question? Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. A question and then a comment.
Sure.
What exactly is involved if we cut that Z-Space item?
What do you mean, what is involved? We wouldn't have the program.
At all.
No.
What comes with the program?
Sure. That would be great. Thanks, Teresa.
Good evening, everyone. So, the Z-Space program is software and stations where students use augmented reality to actually do dissections, to look deeper into body systems, look deeper into mathematics. It's all the disciplines, and it was going to be piloted in every single school in the district. So, it was a one-year pilot, so we could really make an informed decision.
Okay. So, this is district-wide levels?
Yes.
Uh-huh. So, every teacher basically uses this?
No, no. There would be hubs. This is for 10 stations. It's a very expensive.
Stations.
Right. Right. And so, there would be a couple of each of the elementary schools, and four here. So, it would support the instruction that exists, and like I said, it's definitely state-of-the-art technology.
And its oversight is the tech department?
Really, it comes through curriculum. So, these decisions that are made are with the teachers and the principals, and then, yes, the technology budget will cover that cost, but it comes through curriculum and instruction. That's where those decisions are made.
Okay. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Earlier, what I was trying to get at was, I think that perhaps rather than cut this Z-Space, there might be potential cuts in the actual technology staff, staffing. I think there are like six people involved in the overall. Tech specialists, and the administrator, and the network administrator. Is there any possible reduction we can make in that area?
I wish Karen could be here. Can you speak to that, please? Thank you. It's a good question. We did talk about it, but Pat's going to sort of explain. John, can you remind me, though, where in the budget you're seeing, it's staff, which is going to be 1,000s, but...
Three.
Three of 13.
I will, are you, can I speak, are you listening? You're with me? Okay. Good. No, I just want to make sure. You know, we went through the budget and areas with a fine-tooth comb. The technology staff is busy all the time. We are becoming a STEM program and a STEM school, which is science, technology, engineering, mathematics. We have an administrator, yes, but it's not a full-time administrator for technology. That person does communications, information technology, data. We live in a world of a lot of data, a lot of input and output, and smartboards, and tech, and computers, and laptops, and everyone has Chromebooks, and teachers have MacBooks, and, and there's a lot of hands. And so, the people who are in the technology budget are really the people who keep the ball rolling. As far as the instructional piece, Karen Files does some of that, but the people who in the schools, they do a little of it, but they also, we have tech champions, and we have a $1,000 stipend for teachers, to help teachers with the instructional piece. If there's a problem, they want to see how to implement something with a smartboard, or a virtual reality program, or a TEDx, of all of those kinds of things. So, it's not an area that we recommended as cutting. So, you know, that, that's, I will say to you that everything on this list is, are the things that came before that.
Can, we just previously talked about public relations person. Perhaps this department could pick up on a trial basis, some of the PR.
Well, they do. Karen Files does a lot of our public relations. The mailers you get, it all comes from Karen. The region in review is put together by my administrative staff, myself, my secretaries, but put together by Karen. Colin over back there takes pictures. He's our photographer. I mean, we're all, it's all hands on deck.
Was it possible, then, rather than institute a specific public relations person, have some of these duties go into the technology department?
Well, that, that's a possibility, but I think if you listen to Julie and the chair, they're looking for a little more. They're looking for somebody who's more focused on the agri-science piece of it, from my understanding.
Then, especially for the first year, the ag science director might be able to share some of that public relations responsibility.
I agree with that.
It's a suggestion.
Yep. John, that was a little bit of what I was suggesting as well, and since we didn't have consensus, I sort of moved on from, from that one, but I believe we'll probably be coming back to it. Do we have any more questions about the Z-Space? Lisa, did you have a question?
I have some comment. I'm really reluctant to cut programs for the kids. I think we have cut, and we've cut, and, you know, to go through this and then start looking at the tech teachers, I think we should just stick with the recommendations of the superintendent and the staff, but I'm really reluctant to start cutting things for the kids, and I feel very strongly about that. So, to spend time here, going over, and having to justify every program, I just think that that's, I just don't agree with that, and it's, it's kind of maddening a little bit.
Thank you. Yep. Jen?
I just want to agree, say that I agree with Lisa, because, first of all, I'm in favor of keeping the Z-Space, so I would hate to see that go. And for 32 votes, I just feel like, for me personally, that we're nickel-and-diming here, and I think we should just trust our administration and not sit here and take a fine-tooth comb and a magnifying glass and try to nickel-and-dime everything just so that we can satisfy 32 votes. That's my personal opinion. All right. Thank you.
All right. So, yeah. Anthony?
I couldn't agree more with Lisa on programmatic issues, especially something like Z-Space. When you, it's, it's like, it's absurd to even, to even go there, that we would consider starting to, you know, cut something that is described as augmented reality and a new way of learning. I mean, what, beyond remiss, in my opinion. But I did want to follow up on the technology question. So, we have three and a half technology specialists in the district, correct?
We have, right. Maureen Brown here. Right. Right. That's it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it. Yeah. Brooke Faison, right.
All right. So, remind us, what do the, what do the technology specialists? I know what a network administrator does, I mean, but what, what about the technology specialists? What are they doing? Day in and day out?
Oh, that's it. Yeah, Brooke Faison, right.
All right, so remind us, what do the, what do the technology specialists? I know what a network administrator does. I mean, but what what about the technology specialists? What are they doing? Day in and day out?
Well, um, I I will tell you from my point of view, and we can ask the principals to also chime in. First of all, we're in the middle of testing. So right now, they are doing a lot of work with testing, making sure that Chromebooks are up and running, making sure that, um, you know, every, helping teachers if there's a problem, they're there to help them. They, at the beginning of the year, first of all, in the summer, they, we clean out all of the Chromebooks, okay? And we reprogram them. They do a lot of, um, here, repairing of Chromebooks. We don't send things out anymore. So when Karen talks about all of the replacement program and all the things that happen, that goes on. They go in, they do a lot of, um, in the elementary schools, the filming, okay? They get, they do the newsletters, okay? The PAO prints and the Shining Star and the other one, I can't think of it. They are involved with the media specialists. So they are helping with teachers to, um, implement different programs that are going on, whether they need to bring in a certain technology, whether they need to help them set up some kind of, um, uh, virtual learning, all of those kinds of things. So there's a lot of different things. They 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 just do a lot of things. What am I forgetting, ladies? At the elementary? Right. And we had to, just so you know, maybe two or three years ago, we were so busy with technology at Chapag, we took Maureen Brown from Washington Primary, gave them the halftime Brooke, and then Maureen and Karen are up here, and they're both always running. Do you want to add?
So we have effectively a half of, a half a person at each of the primaries.
Yep.
Right, and you have two?
Two here.
Two here.
But some of the change took place when we went to the one-to-one initiative. And we introduced so many more computers into all of the schools that it became even more critical to keep them up and running all day. And kids are kids and they have problems with it. And those are the people that usually can handle most of those issues during the day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Go to Anthony. Should we move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, so let's talk about the next item, facilities maintenance, 25,000 plus FICA Medicare if it, if that turns out to be a person. I can just tell you right now, if Greg were here, you'd be pitching a fit. He says we don't put enough in there to begin with. I I have, uh, concerns about this because I also know, I I I'm just aware of how many things we pulled out of the AgSTEM project, um, things around, you know, the grounds type of things, whether it's the tennis courts or it's the parking lots or it's the whatever. Not the 25,000 is gonna get us new tennis courts, but I just, you know, we have four old buildings. That really worries me. I mean, I would consider it if we had to, but it concerns me. Anyone, anyone else?
My concern with the facilities, and I guess I'll I'll step in for Greg. In a way, I could never.
You can never really.
I could never fill in for Greg. This is a pay-me-now-pay-me-later problem. I mean, we we have the towns, on one hand, you know, looking for a long-range capital plan to understand what's coming because they hear numbers, they see things. You know, one of these days, we're gonna need a new roof. The, you know, it's the poster child of a capital plan, hopefully not for many years. But these things are gonna happen. And if that were the only thing on our capital plan list, I would, I would feel a lot better because it's easy to explain, right? And it's, it's a seven, eight-year cycle. But the list is long, right? And there's so many things on it. And I feel like, you know, one of these days, it's, it's, you know, everything's gonna break at the same time and we're gonna, we're gonna be talking about a bond where something's substantial to cover everything that breaks in one shot. So it may feel good to to cut things out here and there, but it's, it it could be a real ugly financial situation because it's exactly what the financial managers of the towns are looking to avoid is a surprise.
Right.
So, and I know $25,000 is not gonna, it's it's more of a principal discussion than it is carving into that list.
Right.
So.
But that's op, that's facilities operation, I mean, that's two, that's painting two classrooms, I think. That's, I mean, that's just, there's so much that needs to happen. We've got ceiling tiles that need, you know, it's, it's, it could go, yeah, there's a lot that needs to happen.
There's a long list that, right? That's just waiting for funding.
Absolutely.
Right, so, and and this is 25,000 that could be applied towards that list, whatever that list is.
Exactly. All right, let's, uh, look at number five, program change, things coming from page nine. The reading power speaker, the soccer goals, the weight room improvements, the baseball training aid. Anyone want to comment on those? I know, I know.
Reading, I'm reading the faces. No?
No.
No? No, no, let's move on.
All right.
I didn't mean to cut off anybody who actually had.
No, 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 I know. I agree, I agree. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard. It's just like, it's a very few votes, but we're ba, here we are. We're back at the table. We gotta, we gotta look at something. I'm just, I'm gonna make a judgment here. I'm just gonna jump because I feel like it, I get to do that. So I want to jump to seven, educational assistance. One at, um, that's Burnham, right? BSB, Burnham and one at WPS, uh, as well as with the FICA and Medicare. And and as much as I hate to pu, to cut educational assistance, I feel like that one is one I could support when I look at the the staffing ratios. It it brings our three buildings closer in alignment to each other. You know, I I have to trust our administration that that they know what their needs are. And, um, I'm sure they would love to to have more educational assistance, but they've, they feel that they can do what they need to do with this. So this is one, I guess, I can support. Anyone else want to comment on that one?
Only that I agree. I just wanted to tell you, I would support that one. I agree with you.
Okay.
May I just say something?
Sure.
What I will tell you about that also is that with the change in paraprofessionals and everyone, um, there's a good chance that they can be rehired in another position. We get a lot of change there. They may not be educational assistants, but there may be a job for them, you know, if they're interested. So it's not really, we may be laying people off, but there may be an opportunity to come back.
Well, that's good to know because we always, I mean, when we're looking at this, we're seeing, you know, 1.0 and there is, oh, it's good to remember, there's always a person behind that. But, um, we don't know who those people are. So at this point, we're just looking at the needs of the building, but it's nice to know that there might be some space, place for them because we have many very dedicated people in our district, so, and we appreciate that. All right, so if we leave that one in, yeah? Stephanie?
I'm a little on a fence, on the fence about this one, only because I don't know exactly what role or how much assistance that provides to the students. Again, I'm kind of in that camp where anything that touches or affects the students, I'm not really keen to go cutting. And even though it may bring the three schools a little closer to alignment, are we saying that you, that support to student ratio and booth free is like optimal? I mean, how, do we know that they're not needing to catch up to the other two? I mean, just because I'm out of, I don't know exactly how that affects their day-to-day. I'm not saying that I wouldn't support it if everyone feels like that's where we need to go, but it's, for me, it's one of those items on the list where I I just give it a second to pause. I don't know. I mean, if someone can.
Those are really, really good questions. Maybe, maybe our, um, maybe Emily's here?
Yeah. You want to get by the microphone? Sorry. Understand some of the perspectives that you're sharing, but I just want you to note that it's number seven on the list. So, um, you know, as a principal, and I think, I think they may share in the same feelings that we we put the ones that had least impact to students first. We recognize that this has impact to students.
Okay. Yeah?
And I don't know if this is, so when we say, um, assistance, are they, are they also the, um, the potential to sub or no? Are these separate? Like, can they, when you, when there's a substitute teacher, do they step into that role?
It really depends on their, their certification.
Mm-hmm.
As a educational.
Right.
Educational assistant could have their associates. Still being this role. I know that my staff, we hire, most of our hires are with a bachelor's or more. So we're lucky in that way so that we can use that.
You can use them as substitutes. And you do, correct?
We do when we need to, yes.
When you need to.
Which is sometimes often.
Often, right. Which is really important, yeah. I'm kind of leaning towards, um, Stephanie. And I, I don't know if I would support this.
All right, that's fair enough. We, we had said we didn't want to be looking at things that touch the children, although it is hard in an educational school system to cut things that doesn't affect the children, right? So here is the conundrum that we're in, but I hear you. Okay, so, um, I, I skipped six, but let's go back to that one. Point, the .6 art teacher at Chapag. What are we thinking about that? Anthony, you want to comment on that one?
Even more to the point, well, again, what does, what are we, what are we giving up with this teacher? Are we not teaching, um, a particular discipline?
Can we have Kim speak to it? Do you mind?
No.
Okay.
Any cuts are difficult. When I was asked to look at potential cuts for for the school, we looked very carefully at how many students are registered for each course, what the impact would be. We're able to offer all programs. At this time, we have two music teachers, we have two PE teachers, we have one health teacher for seven grades, and we have three art teachers. I would love to keep three art teachers forever. We could fill those classes with kids who don't have anything else to do. But when you look at students who registered for art classes right now, we have enough students for two teachers. That's what we have. When Ag comes in, students will have more choices. The enrichment program will have an additional class. Seventh and eighth graders will enjoy Ag as part of their enrichment beginning next year. So, yes, I would love to keep all of my teachers. I hate asking you to cut anything. This is a very difficult position to be in. However, I have to be practical. And if we have interested art students filling up two teachers' worth of positions and we live with that amount of teachers or less in other, in other enrichment programs, in all honesty, I have to make this recommendation and I'm sorry to do it.
So is this teacher teaching any, any specialty area of, you know, we we talk broadly in terms of art, but there's photography, there's painting, there's sculpture, there's digital.
Mm-hmm. Art teachers are certified to teach art. Out of our three teachers, yes, they have different specialties, but art teachers are certified to teach art. And, um, the, the art teachers that are behind may have to come up to speed on some of these areas, there's no doubt. I'm a science teacher. If you told me to teach biology tomorrow, I'd have some reading to do. There's no question. But a quality teacher teaches quality material.
I I appreciate that, but I just want to get down to the reality of it is.
The reality of it is people have different specialties. There's no doubt about it.
So if we cut this teacher, is it fair then to say that the other two teachers are gonna have to spend the summer either boning up on their, on certain skills or learning new skills to make up the void that this teacher?
Yes, but I would call that fair and reasonable.
I'm not saying it's not, I just.
Okay. No, I'm, just want to make sure I get that word in there because I I don't, I don't want to think, I don't want to present that we haven't thought of something because we have.
That's what I want to get at, is that this isn't just, we take somebody out, everybody enjoys their summer and it's, it's business as usual.
No.
That we're going to have to go through things to make up for the gap that we're creating with this. That I understand numbers divided into, you know, certain classrooms, like that, that's, that's one part of the equation. The other one is we still have to teach, we still have to have certain skills in that classroom. And we're gonna have to go retool.
I appreciate that input, I do.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I wanted to make clear.
I appreciate that.
And it isn't just that straightforward.
I just have a question for Kim.
Sure.
And I think we went over this with more detail when we went over the budget the first time. Is it two bodies or was it divided? Is it three teachers or just two teachers in the way they're divided? So we're not really losing, it's three separate teachers?
And we'd have two bodies left.
Okay, I'm just, because sometimes it's like a half.
I want to make sure I'm clear. When we start talking about sections, sometimes it's hard to follow, so that's why I said it so bluntly.
It's three bodies, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All set?
Thank you. So we had some good questions, yeah. I know, I'm I'm wondering, do we want to, do we, how are we feeling about that cut? Anyone? Yep, Lisa?
Um, the first time we voted, I, I was the one who was against it. And I think, to be fair, listening to Kim's recommendation and seeing as that you know best, I mean, I would, I would probably could change my mind on that one. And because it's being highly recommended by the administration, that there, you know, I just don't want to, I just don't want to drop the arts. You know, we're very heavy on the tech, the science, which I agree with. I just didn't want to take away the arts. But if you promise that we're not losing anything, then I could be okay with that.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, I, that's, um, I, I, I.
Let me, I have a follow-up question, Kim. Sorry, I'm gonna make you walk again. Just, because then he's gonna put up the red sign that says Mike. So I don't want to create a bit of a revolving door here where, you know, next year, we have a, a class of AgSTEM students. And if they start to want to take art, are we immediately tripped into needing to hire this position right back next budget year? Because that would be seen as a net increase to our budget? And we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna, creating problems.
Mm-hmm. You have to realize that as our high school population increases, our middle school population will significantly decrease. So there will be a check and balance there. And also, again, there'll be more offerings. So art will be a part of offerings that is, there's one more thing in it, the enrichment program. So there will be more things for students to choose from. I believe that we can continue to absorb this.
Okay, thank you.
But when I say I highly recommend it, I highly reluctantly recommend it. Please, just let me say that piece. But I have to recommend it in, in good conscience.
Thank you. All right, um, let's, let's look at the next two items, the Burnham Library Clerk, 15,000 plus the FICA. We've talked about this in the past. Does anyone have questions about this? Does anyone feel that they strongly support or are against this? No comments on this one? Stephanie? Stephanie?
I guess more just a question because the last time we met about this, Kathy was most outspoken about it, and she's not here tonight. So, do we have, I'm assuming she was there and she talked about this, and this is also something she recommends.
Well, I guess I would highlight Emily's saying, you know, it's eight on the list. So, these were, these, I mean, they recommended over us digging through the budget and for other things, you know, like, you know, some of the other things they've asked for. So, keeping that in mind.
I just, I didn't know if she had a piece to say or not. But I hear what you're saying, that, you know.
So, I guess it's like it's a reluctant recommendation, and it made it down to eight, so it's very, it's, you know.
You know, Kathy doesn't support this recommendation. I mean, she, you know, reluctantly, she does. From my vantage point, we share everything at Burnham and Booth.
Right.
And this position can very easily be shared. You know, the kids have the luxury there of having media, you know, all the time, but that doesn't happen in WPS because they don't have the staff. You know, there's forty-five kids at Burnham and there's seventy-four at Booth Free. Two and a half days each is, is plenty. But, you know, it's, the other thing I just want to say is we sit here and we're grappling with this. You know, it's about wants and needs. We want all of this. What do we need? Okay? And, and, you know, you have to make some cuts. So, somewhere, someone is going to have to make some cuts. So, this is our best suggestion. You know, she couldn't even get anybody to fill the position. She has two sisters filling the position. So, it's not even like we, we have, you know, you know, a, a media person, you know, who's, you know, a trained, it, it's two nice sisters. They're very nice, and they do a great job. But they share the position. So, um, it's not something we want to do, it's a suggestion, that's all.
Thanks, Pat.
Pat, just to follow up on, on what you said, and then Julie. The lib, library is available part-time at WPS and full-time in the other two schools? Is that?
Well, it's one person for the, double the amount of kids, and she is also the technology person. So, she is not a full library person. She is the technology person too. That's the half of Brook. Brook Phazon is the tech and the library. So, it's just.
Inter.
You know, and, and in an elementary school.
In an elementary school, teachers can take their kids down to the library, you know? It's, it's, there's a lot of ways to work it out. I, you know, we'd love to keep it, but it's an opportunity to, to, to make a cut if you'd like to, that's.
Well, and interestingly, if the person at WPS is half-time tech, half-time library, and we have one person doing tech in two places, Booth and Burnham, and one person doing library Booth and, you know, maybe they can sta, help staff the library that other part of the time.
The tech person is the same person at Booth and Burnham. Then they each have their own library person.
Right, but I'm saying.
Right.
If, you know, they, if they put their, if they married their schedules such that one was always in the building.
Yeah.
They could then possibly help staff the library. So, the staffing would be very similar to what is happening in WPS. And the, they would be able to have the library possibly open if they piggyback their schedules. Julie has a question, and I think Teresa wanted to add to that. Oh, there's a clerk. Okay. Okay, good to know, thank you. Julie?
I know this position has come up a number of times, I believe last year, and then again prior to, and I think Kathy had strong feelings about it. Alan knew a lot about it because there was a lot of parent uproar about this, and the parents felt strongly that this was important to keep the position. So, for fifteen thousand dollars, I just don't think it's, I mean, it was a hotbed before, and it, it's just not a big-ticket item. And I don't know enough about it, but I remember hearing Kathy's position and Alan's position, who did know a lot about it, and they convinced me that, let's not mess with this.
All right. Well, we're going to cut, we'll come back. So far, I just want to remind everyone, we have, we have unanimous agreement on one item.
Which item is that?
That would be the first one. So, okay, okay. So, moving on to the very last recommendation, let's just see what the conversation, uh, conversation is about. Because, because putting it all together, you know, it's good to talk about each of these items. We have to, we're all make our own priority lists. Maybe we can come, maybe we can agree on a couple more. So, Jen?
I just would like to say that for item nine, I'm not in favor of it because I feel like this has something, this is a discussion that has to have more thought in it and not necessarily coming back the second time around to just say that we did it is, I just feel like not really thinking it through. And if people feel that we're top-heavy, I think that having a, a deeper conversation for next year as we have AgSTEM coming in and, and maybe having that conversation. But I'm just not comfortable doing this in the second turn around for a budget time, again, for thirty-two votes. It's just not something I'm in favor of, so.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this item? Anthony?
Go ahead, Jim.
Dr. Costino, did you present this, these cuts? I'm sorry, I was late.
Yes, sorry. This was, uh.
So, what is, so what is the point five administrator you're suggesting be cut? If, if.
Well.
What's go through?
Well.
Where would it go? Where would it come from? I'm sorry.
Well, I, um, would not want to, um, say at this point, because I'm not going to be the superintendent. I think the superintendent would have to sit with the administrative staff, evaluate the needs, and make some decisions. I did not put one point O because I think that that is absolutely, um, will be detrimental in a year where you have a new superintendent and you are, um, bringing in AgSTEM. I think when you look at, um, some of the, um, functions that happen in the administrative arena, um, you know, you, you look in the curriculum area, you look in the public relations area, the communications area, um, you see what skills the new superintendent has, where she can pick up, and maybe where some of the other administrators can pick up. I am concerned in the fact that, um, you know, administrative teams, when they work well, things go well, everything runs smoothly, and no one really understands what's going on. If you were to scan the state and see all the problems that occur in school systems where people are removed or fired or arrested, it always happens because there are problems that occur because things get out of control. What did you say, pay now or pay later? And I think this is definitely one of those areas, especially with a new superintendent and a new program. So, it is my, my suggestion to make this cut. It's at the bottom of the list.
I'm sorry, I was only asking if it, where it would come from.
I apologize.
That's fine.
It's coming from.
You said that you said.
Wherever the new superintendent decides to take it from.
Thank you.
The other piece, just so you know, is that there, no, no administrator will lose a job. One of them can revert back to a teaching position, a half a teaching position, if you cut a half a position.
On this item, I think we have to consider, uh, the taxpayers' interests in campaigning for the board. And over the last few months, everyone that I've talked to states that we are top-heavy in administration. I mean, when you look at ten people making one point five million dollars, even, the other night, even Joe Arardi stated he doesn't, you know, he hasn't looked into it, but he feels that a lot of our administrators' duties overlap, and they can be combined. You look at other school systems, um, there are school systems where the superintendent is also the principal in a school. There are school systems where the superintendent is also the curriculum coordinator in a school. I would recommend that we increase the cut to one full-time administrator. Secondly, we have to look at the reasons why this budget went down. It went down basically because Roxbury, uh, did not want to incur the tax increases that would be imposed, uh, if this budget goes through. And to, and I agree with the superintendent, we have to cut something. If you want to take the chance and roll the dice for thirty-two votes, then, you know, go with the, go with the token offering. But we have to cut the wheat from the chaff.
I just wanted to comment on why the budget went down. And I agree that Roxbury certainly had their issues because of their losing less students than the other two towns. But as I mentioned at our retreat, there was a lot of misinformation about what this vote was about. Many, many people thought this was either a direct vote about AgSTEM, or it was payback for voting through AgSTEM. And so, I think we have some work to do as far as making sure this time around, people know what this vote is about. Um, so, I just wanted to add that because I do think that played a significant role, at least in Bridgewater. I can't speak for both other towns, although I heard a lot of that sentiment from Washington as well.
I don't want to say anything to insult the public, I really don't. But I mean, to, to say that a person who goes into a voting booth doesn't realize that they're voting for a budget, when that's what the question is in front of them. I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Julie, but I don't, maybe the board can put out the word more that it's the budget, it's not AgSTEM, it's, it's, it's our operating budget. But I don't know how much we should be expected to do, I mean.
People believed it. A lot of people believed it, and a lot of people approached me right at the end and said, is this about AgSTEM? They honestly were confused because they were told by a number of residents who are very active on the anti-AgSTEM group that that's what this was. So, I'm not trying to insult voters either, they're all smart people, but this is what they were told by other community members, and that's what they thought.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would agree, except that it passed in, in, in Washington and Bridgewater where there are numerous anti, you know, AgSTEM, uh, folks. And secondly, um, their concern about the budget is not specifically about this year, but about what happens when we do get AgSTEM. And there are possible, uh, you know, ramifications concerning other areas of the budget that are not AgSTEM, but we need, you know, we need to subsidize AgSTEM at the expense of the existing, uh, facilities and, um, programs. And secondly, being on the facilities committee meeting, I want to remind everyone, they should probably come to a facilities meeting and see the tens of millions of dollars that are going to be necessary for these, uh, four or five buildings in the next ten years. The roof is going to need to be replaced, and that's within three years. And there's a whole list, a myriad of things that are never going to get done if we're, if our hands are tied with, you know, uh, with all the other budget concerns.
Well.
Regarding the administrator, your, your input?
Do you have input?
I do.
Go.
I'd support it. In fact, I would support a full one. But I think at least a half. Time has come.
Okay.
I'm on the fence about it too. I mean, it's the one thing, I can say in Roxbury, um, that's the one thing you keep hearing over and over again. That was Barbara Henry's, like, first speaking point. You know, what can we do on the administrative side? So, what does this mean? How do we, you know, can we reorganize? Is that beneficial? Are we on board with that? How, you know, I, I just feel like you've got more of an opinion, and I want to hear more of, you know, your thought behind it.
Yeah, the superintendent, current or future, has the ability to, uh, reassign their staff. And, you know, it's, we're, we're small, there's not that many options on the table when, when it, when it comes down to it. But there has, this, this has been a discussion, as far as I know, that's been going on internally to the district for the last year. It's not something that just came up after this budget was voted down. It was, it was a pointed discussion. Uh, it was, uh, it was something that was considered or briefly talked about when we prepar, when we were preparing the original budget. And at the time, the board, the board's druthers were, would be, we, we knew we had a new superintendent coming in, we didn't know who that person was, but I think we, we felt as, as a body to say that we, we were able to recall that the budget, the budget we had, except for the, the medical premiums, which is real, still real money to the taxpayers, but, but for that piece, we, we had a, we had an otherwise flat budget. And we were going to take that and say, let the new superintendent come in, uh, figure things out, and then come back and make recommendations to the board during the course of, of, of the following year. That option is no longer ours. So, something has to be done. And right now, we've only got fifteen thousand dollars, and I think if we want to go for a third budget, we, we could stick with fifteen and, and, and go there. And I, I don't think that's what the board wants, the message the board wants to send back to the public. I've gotten a little off, but, but the point is, we've, there have been internal discussions about what options are on the table, how these things can be balanced out. And I don't believe it would, even though it's last on the list, I don't believe it's, it made the list just because. There were other things that could have been on this list, I suppose, if you looked at the entire budget. But it got on here because, because the superintendent and his staff have thought through this and said, if this is where the board wants to go, they can make it work. I think if they thought we were cutting into an artery or into bone, that, one, it wouldn't make the list, and you'd hear a lot more comments right now from other people, namely our administrators. Would it be easy? No. But, or changes. But there are opportunities that, that are there, and, and so, that's, that's where I'm coming from. We, we can't get into too many specifics again because we have to, we'd have to go into an executive session if you want to talk, get, get anything more specific than that, so, which we could. So, I mean, Michelle?
I'm, I'm feeling on the fence about this, but could possibly support it. What I, what, what bothers me, because I feel it might be possible to reorganize in a way that makes sense and the work get done. I don't personally feel that we're very top-heavy, but, but, but we could probably be creative. I, I don't like the timing, and that's what really gives me pause. Because I think that's a, that's a large task to figure out over the summer, along with starting up AgSTEM. And I don't like putting, uh, us in that position to do that. But we're in this position, you know? Our budget went down, shame on all of us for not getting the people out there the first time. I own that too. I mean, I've done, I, I, I did a lot, but I've done more in years past. I wasn't hearing a lot of negative, uh, stuff in, in Washington, and, um, so I thought we were okay, and it passed. But I can tell you right now, not even all of our parents voted. I don't know how to explain that, but you can just look at the numbers, the turnout was pitiful. And I don't, I, you know, we're going to have to. And I don't, you know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do some educating about that everywhere. I don't know if parents don't understand what it is, or it just, they just felt, "Well, I haven't heard a lot of controversy, I'm sure it'll pass." But, so, but here we are. And this is what happens when a budget doesn't pass. We all get to sit here at the table and talk about staff and program, and try to figure out how, how we're going to make this work and run our school system. And we are asked by our community to take care of our four old buildings. God forbid we let anything fall apart because, one, it's a safety issue, and, two, we hear from them the minute something doesn't start, it doesn't look nice. So we have four old buildings to take care of, and they want our students to be the best, and so do we. So, so I don't like it, but I see that we might have to do it.
And if I could add, if you, if we deal with this in a subsequent year, like next year, it'll be coincident with also opening doors to AgSTEM. And if, if we're going to have to make adjustments and change, my opinion would be, it would be this coming school year that we work through that, not while we're trying to, you know, on an overall year for the, for the AgSTEM program. So that's another dimension to this. So there is a timing aspect to this.
I don't know. I almost feel like the planning year is more important than the opening year, but either way, I mean, I hear what you're saying. They're both important, but...
Lisa?
I'm also on the fence about it, only because that's all that's been talked about in Roxbury by community. And we have to listen because we represent them. So, you know, I've, I've thought a lot about that. So that might be something, since it is such a big decision, that I need, we may need to go in executive session, because it's a, of all the things, I think that's the biggest thing we're voting on tonight. However, I do have a question. Will the new director of the STEM Academy, will he be part, or he or she be part of this administrative alignment? Or does that not have anything to do with the superintendent and the administrators as far as curriculum and other things that one of these positions will be cutting? Is that something that they'll be taking on? No?
No.
Specifically?
I think there are two, and you guys speak to this too, but, so the director of the AgSTEM program is not an administrator. They are teacher plus stipend. So, so it's, that's just sort of a, you know, it's a different union, a different title, a different classification all around. So it's, so they're acting as a, they are, and a director.
Okay.
And they will be at the table during this whole planning year with all, with all the other administrators, or at least the middle high administrators, talking about schedule, talking about program and integrating into the high school. So, so they will be at the table, but...
But not in that capacity as taking on the roles of a position we might cut?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Two things I want to just, sorry, just for a second, I want to clarify. You said that you're representing Roxbury. I feel like I just, I just need to be, right? We're here representing the region, right? And we ought to do what's best for the region, not necessarily what's best for our respective hometowns, right? I know we're all on the same page. I just want to be on the record, no, you don't apologize, I just want to be clear about it, because in truth, I don't know what, in the end, Roxbury, for example, is looking for, but if it's an ultimate flat budget, given the fact that their student share went up, I think the math says we would have to cut a million and a half, or million one, excuse me, out of the current budget beyond the cuts we've already identified. That's a bridge too far, right? So what we're doing here is, is more about the district not reacting to, right? Which brings me to my second point I just wanted to clarify. When I said our hand is forced, in that we need to make, forced in that we need to make changes, right? We put a budget, it failed, public has said, "Go back and sharpen your pencil." That's what I mean by our hand is forced. We've been given a lot of choices, and looking at sort of left side and the right side, we, you know, we're going to, we're going to sort of pick our poison of what we want to do next. And what I'm hearing is, nothing, this isn't easy, and it's going to get harder and harder, you know, as you continue to optimize the region, but nobody wants to touch programs. And, you know, and surprise, surprise. So we have a choice. We can go after non-programmatic costs and make the best of it there, or we can go after program costs. I think choice has been pretty clear so far from what I've heard. So what we're talking about here is getting, we're getting sort of boxed into a certain discussion, but it's the, it's the discussion we have to have. So, like I said, this is about, we've been given a task by the voters to go back and sharpen our pencils. That's what this is. We need to figure out the best way to do that in the best interest of still letting this region do its job, which is teach these kids. So, Julie. No, Julie, she had a hand up before you, Jim.
Sorry, Jim. So based on our discussion, it seems like there were three things that were the least controversial before we got to the administration. And that was, of course, the 15K for the superintendent's salary, the art teacher, which I think Kim made clear that hesitant, but we can not affect the kids with that, and the two assistants, I think we were, some of us were okay with that. And if we go with the half of the administrator, if we add those four things together, that puts us at about 175,000. And I feel like it sends a message that we really worked hard to make some serious cuts. We cut administration, we cut a salary, those two things have been hot-button issues in our towns. And we also, you know, cut a teacher and some assistants, which is a heart-wrenching decision for those of us sitting up here on the board. So I feel like if we do go there at 175, I think we can live with that, at least I can live with that, and I think that we can sell that to the voters.
Yeah, before Julie was going to say that, I was going to say that I had added up items one through eight. And it's about 205,000, is that right, Bob? About?
Yeah, about nine, yes.
Because the total is...
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I think it's about 205. I'm sorry I missed the discussion on the Z space. I know, am I incorrect? Didn't Karen Files, wasn't that something that she was really hoping that would stay in?
Well, more, it's, Karen Files is somebody who's delivering a service, but it's primarily a teaching aid, so it's the teachers who want it.
Yeah.
It's not Karen's project, I want to be clear about this.
I didn't say it was, I just, she reported on it.
Yes, yes, she did. You're right, she did.
Just want to ask a question. No, it's fine. So can you just clarify for me, so when you say .5 for the admin, but that they could go, they could teach? Is that what, is that what, Pat, were you saying that? Can you just explain that a little bit? Because for me, I don't know how we ask an admin to go from full-time to part-time, and then, I'm just not clear on how that works.
Well, you know, there is a couple of positions in the high school that we still need to fill, okay? Because the people have left in the last month, okay? And because we're just holding on to start them for September. One of the positions is a reading teacher that we desperately need. It's not on this list, so it was never even thought about being taken away. It's in the budget, okay? So when you think about the administrators, one of the reasons why I don't want to talk to you about how we're going to rearrange it, first of all, I'm not going to be here. Second of all, it's based on contract, and it's based on, you know, who's in, who's out, that kind of thing. So the administrators that are here also have teaching licenses. So they will be able to, somebody will be able to be part of a teacher. So they would be part administrator, part teacher. So that's basically in a very broad stroke, what I'm talking about. Does that make sense?
That reading position, how, is that a half position, a full position?
Right, yeah, it's a full-time position.
And the person, Pat, I'm assuming...
Person just retired.
Right, but the administrator who would be implicated or involved here, and you've talked to that person, and...
Well, that person is certified to teach that position. Yeah, it has to do with certification, it has to do with who's the last person in.
Right.
You know, the good piece about this is that no one is being laid off, that is the good piece. The other piece, and I've spoken to the new superintendent about it, and I think it's important that people understand this, because this happens sometimes. You know, when you remove somebody from administration to a teacher, you cannot assume that they're still going to do all the jobs they did as an administrator. So I just think that that's important for people to understand, you know? I just, you know, it's not something that, and the reason it's on here is because I had to discussions with a couple of people that, you know, I put it on here, but it's not, again, something I support for the reasons I talked about, but I also do understand the other piece of this. I understand.
So I'm assuming that if they're, if they're going to be going from a full-time admin to a part-time admin and part-time teacher, that that means less pay, correct? I mean, that's, I know that, I'm just, so there's no guarantee that that person will choose to stay? Right, so that's the risk.
There's always a risk.
Right.
Since, since you've decided to interrupt the meeting, could we at least ask you for the courtesy of your name and the town? Thank you. Appreciate your comments, sir. Have a good evening. Michelle? Yeah, sure.
I'm going to make a motion, see where it goes. I would make a motion that the board cut, on the sheet in front of us, is presented to us by the administration, items one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight, which I calculate is about 182,000.
Say that again.
Items one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight. So not three and not nine.
And what did you get for that?
About 182.
I don't hear a second, so motion fails, or the, if that's appropriate phrasing.
I think so.
It's not seconded.
It's not seconded.
I'd like to, go ahead, Michelle.
Well, I was just going to, so Julie made a proposal as well, which were items one, six, seven, and nine.
Well, before you do that...
No, I wasn't going to make a motion, so I was just reviewing.
All right.
And I wanted to let Jim know that we've, I forget what, what point you came in, but we spoke...
At the end.
At length, though, about every item.
I understand.
Okay, so I was going to let you know that you probably weren't going to get a lot of support for a few of those items there. We, I, I think, just to clarify, before we make a motion, I believe Julie is correct in that we have pretty unanimous, I believe, but please correct me if I'm wrong, support for at least one, six, and maybe seven. Am I incorrect on that? Can we, I'm trying to establish a baseline before we start putting forward motions that go up and then go down. Did John, oh, but...
John, what?
But Jim's here, so we still have a quorum.
We still have a quorum.
Phew.
I think those were the least controversial, is...
Yeah, right. So, 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 so would anyone at this point in time not support a cut that included one, six, and seven? Let's, let's, let's do, let's start with that. Comments or just saying, "No, you wouldn't support it"? Okay.
Specifically, still number seven.
Me too. So one and six is where we have the most agreement. Okay. So anything that includes those two? Seven, a little bit. Nine, we haven't, we haven't really straw-pulled on that. How, how, can I have a few more comments on nine? We've heard from myself, Anthony, and Jen, I think, about nine. Anyone else? Oh, no, no, Lisa, you spoke about it too.
You did, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like I could support it. Yeah, so we all did. We're sort of on the fence about that one. Anthony, where, where did you want to go with this?
Well, we barely have a quorum, and we're missing essentially half the board for a number of people, maybe a little less than half, but really close.
Right, really close. Hence, hence the...
One, like I said, about half the board. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that the board consider that we move the vote to Monday's meeting, that we start Monday's meeting with the continuation of this discussion, when we have a full board present, because I know the ones that are missing have an absolute opinion about these things. And this is not an insignificant decision that we're making here for the district, and I'd like the full board to be involved. So my motion would be that we delay the vote tonight until Monday. We could certainly continue any discussions around this, and that, you know, that's why we're here, and we can continue doing this, but we would delay it.
Can I?
Yeah, which, thank you, Pat, which means that I would adjourn the meeting, is, that would be the motion on the floor.
All right. Before you get a second, on the motion, you made a motion, but...
My motion would be, I'll clear it up. The motion is to adjourn this meeting. And then, and then, to be clear, we would pick up this vote on Monday. I need a second.
I'll second it. Let's talk about it.
Any discussion, John?
I, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we are missing most, more than half the board, then I just assumed that we'd not met tonight and just discussed this on Monday night, because then we just sat here for an hour and a half for no reason.
Well, I had polled the board, and I had one response. So I thought we had a, I thought we had a quorum tonight.
We do.
I, I thought we were going to have a board tonight, so...
But we're going to have to re-go through this again, and that was a waste of time for us.
And it was also upon a recommendation of the superintendent that we hold a meeting, it's been noticed, so I took her recommendation that we have this meeting.
I just feel, for me personally, that if that were the case, then we should have not had this meeting at all and just had it Monday, because otherwise, we just wasted an hour and a half. So that's frustrating for me.
I guess, I, I agree. It is frustrating, and it would have been nice, I guess, if we had known about more of, had a better sense of the attendance. I do, once the meeting was noticed, we needed to meet, I guess we could have gathered and adjourned. But I'm wondering if we could salvage this time by having the video sent and having the people who were not here watch that, so we can really pick up from where we left off. Because I agree, I don't want to redo this, I don't, we've, we've, we've done a lot of work, so, I don't know. What do we think?
Julie?
I agree with Michelle. I think it's really unfair. I'm not sure why people didn't show up, but I think they should have to watch the video and pick up where we left off instead of starting from scratch.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we start Monday evening as though this never happened.
Okay.
This was a warm-up.
Okay.
I, I think they need to, they need to catch up to where we are so that we can just get on with it. Absolutely, I'm not interested in doing this again.
Another question. Is there any value or help in at least voting on the two items that we have consensus on? Does that, so that we don't at least have to...
Does that, so that we don't at least have to redo that portion? Can we, can we vote on, on the two, those two items and then move forward? Because I, I do feel that after those two items, there's a fair amount of, we're, we're sort of split, so having those other voices might be helpful to, to either sway us off the fence or at least make, you know, fill out the, the fence. You know, it might go seven-five, I don't really know, but we're, we're feeling pretty torn about everything else. Can we vote on those other two?
Individually or bundled?
Oh, it was just two. Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I think we need to validate the time we've spent.
All right, we could, we'll, we could vote on those two pieces, so I'll table the motion that's on the table.
No, 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 wait, don't table it, because then...
Table it, no?
With, well, do you want to put it, do you want to, do you want to bring it back? You want to withdraw it? Jim, you, you're better at this than I am.
If somebody knows the rules better, I mean, if we'll draw it, withdraw it...
Photos will first, and then bring them...
Yeah, if he's agreed to table it, and it's agreed, that'll be brought back up at the end of this meeting, I think that's okay.
Yeah, when you table it, usually you have to bring it back up in the same meeting, as opposed to postpone, which is a push to a separate meeting.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the reverse. Okay.
So it's tabled, so the first motion to adjourn then is, is tabled.
Do we vote on that?
No. Because it's, I'm, I'm the one who made the motion, so I think I could, I'm, could ask them to be tabled.
Okay.
So, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we agree to cut or remove from the budget the 15,583 from the superintendent's salary line and 38,555 for the .6 art teacher.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay.
All right. What is that? That's 50. Let me just add those two.
What do you got, Bob?
54.
So it's 251.
Put your, Bob, put your...
They're about.
So we're at 2.51?
Yeah.
So at this point, the new number with those two items out of it would be 21,922,602.
Which is two point...
Which is 2.51.
I ask another question before we...
Go ahead.
Before we adjourn while we're here. Number five, the program change, I know it's not large, but I have, it's, it's difficult for me to cut staff when we're leaving some of these other items in. And it's, they're not large items, but I would, I would like to revisit that. But I'm saying that also wondering, Bob, if there might be a possibility at the end of the year that we might be able to...
We can always put it in the manila folder.
Yeah, I know, there's always, there's always a list. There's always a list of things, and we cannot guarantee that any of these would get purchased, but there is the chance that we might be able to do a few of these.
And they would, I would take them, put them into the, I'm not being funny about it, but the manila folder, and then we have to go pick through that and see where we are, because there's always more need than there is dollars.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Thank you. All those in favor? All right? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.